Meeting come to order, the meeting of March the sev- March the 7th, I'm sorry, April the 4th, 2022. Clerk, please read the roll. Am I on here? Yeah.
DeBella.
Here.
Adel.
Here.
Avedision. Buell. Bush. Curry.
Here.
Drake.
Here.
Gardo.
Here.
Healy.
Here.
Hoffman.
Here.
Hoebb. Holloway. Yono. LeChance.
Here.
LeBeau. LeBeau. Lester.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Magnan.
Here.
Maniscalco. Mandike.
Here.
Marata. Payne.
Here.
Patel. Potosky.
Here.
Salemi.
Here.
Sweetsie.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Vassino.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Carrier. We have a quorum.
Okay, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
John, did you notice that I was muted, so I'm here, open to tell. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, and eternal.
Yes, Commissioner Patel, I got you recorded, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item four, approval of the minutes of March the 7th, 2022, is there a motion?
It's moved.
Are there any additions or deletions? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Post? Okay. Item five, public comments relative to agenda items. I know there's some people that want to speak tonight, so what we'll do is, you can now come forward and speak, you have three minutes, public hearings. And if you have something, you can submit it also to the clerk. If you have something, I'm writing.
Mr. Chairman, other honorable members, staff, and present all, good afternoon. I am Joan Facy. At our last meeting, I stood before you, and I spoke about the grave injustice that was being given out to me by MDC briefly. It is the matter of MDC obviously negligent negligence in the matter regarding the abundant and plugged of sewage lateral on Magnolia Street in the city of Hartford, Upper Albany Avenue, North End community. Since my present here last meeting, only minimal movement have been made by MDC to address my suffering and losses. So my present here today is to once again appeal to the body, which is the sole entity by state chartered and empowered to act. I am therefore requesting that you direct MDC staff with due haste and totality to conduct an effective evaluation of my claim with the aim of providing compensation to my suffering and my loss. I making this request, I'm guided and reminded by the past, there was a case in Glastonbury where members in the 90s or early 80s when MDC had to actually compensate a family in Glastonbury after their home was flooded with water. The compensation include even the actual purchase of the property. Mr. Chairman, that was MDC pristine drinking water entered into the home, which the owner claimed caused lasting mold damages. Imagine my home, more than two weeks of raw untreated sewage that was allowed to flow, settled, and piled up in and stayed in the basement for several weeks because-
Mr. Chairman, this is Gary LeBeau here, just wanted to check in. Thank you.
I am reminded not very long ago, about 18 months or so, just across the border in West Hartford, MDC contractors was doing some work over there, and some sewer was allowed to surcharge in some properties. That story was on the local news repeatedly for several days. I remember seeing the honorable chairman along with MDC CEO and other staff meeting there and making promises to the people who suffered. So I'm left to ask, why is it that I have been treated so differently and so poorly? Why is my community treated so badly by MDC? Mr. Chairman, since my, where is my Calvary? When will it arrive? I'm appealing to you guys to have a heart. On June 30th, I was in a car accident total, and I was left to die. And in the same time, all of this has been going on, and I'm suffering, I still can hardly walk. I'm walking by faith, trying to hold my head up. My husband died, and by myself, I'm asking, please, adjust it. I have a restaurant sitting there that I cannot fix because all the plumbing is infested with all this sewer and everything, and nobody tried to come and help me to even clean the place up and get it sanitized. We are human too. Thank you.
Good afternoon to Mr. Chairman and members, staff, and all who are here today. My name is Caleb Eason, and I'm also a shareholder in the Upper Albany, the Upper Albany Avenue area of Hartford. And thank you mostly for allowing me to speak today. I'm here to support Joan and those directly impacted by the sewage that was allowed to pile up in the basements of the properties in and around 65 Magnolia Street. Because our church home is completely attached to Joan's place of, Joan's property also. As you know, Mr. Chairman, Magnolia Street is the Upper Albany, the Upper Albany area of Hartford's North End, and we have endured injustice and differential treatment for many years. Environmental justice has been one of the sore concerns of most people in and around our part of the world. Environmental injustice has led to the devaluation of communities and degradation of life as well as life as we know it and how we are treated. Says a lot about those who mistreat us. MDC can begin to repair the damages and its reputation by addressing these concerns raised today. The community must be made whole, and when one property is devalued, when even one family is degraded, all of the community is likewise devalued and degraded. We cannot accept that. I'm asking this board to consider these issues of the mistake that was made because of a wrong cap pipe. Because of the impact of sewage filling our basement six to eight times over a period of three months last year, we and our cost has multiplied. Actually, we thank you for hearing me today.
Mr. Chairman and other members, staff, and who are here today, good afternoon. My name is June Lyons, and I am a stakeholder in the Upper Albany area of Hartford. I live on Sergeant Street, not very far from Joan. Thanks for allowing me to speak today. I'm here to support Joan and all those directly impacted by the raw sewage that was allowed to pile up in the basements of the properties in the area around 65 Magnolia Street in Hartford, including the neighborhood church. I am also here to complain about how I have been personally treated by MDC staff. I requested and apply for a backwater valve for quite some time now. And in spite of repeated calls and attempts to engage MDC staff, to date, nothing has happened. My understanding is that such a device might help mitigate the general surcharging of sewage during extreme flooding conditions. Myself and others were told at a community meeting a few months ago that this device along with a sump pump was available at no cost to residents in our community. So I am asking this board to also direct MDC staff to address my particular backwater valve and sump pump concerns. As you know, Mr. Chairman, Magnolia Street is in the Upper Albany area of Hartford's North End. Many of us are personally investing in developing and preserving the dignity of our communities. We view the matter of environmental degradation as a very serious matter. We're also very cognizant of how our communities have been treated so differently from how other communities are treated. Why can't we be given the same level of service and respect as others get? Poor environment leads to poor outcomes in communities and how people live. It affects their health and their livelihoods. We have children just like any other community. Why should our children be allowed to grow up in substandard environmental conditions? MDC is specially chartered by the state, as you are very much aware. It is in part, it is part of our democratic system of governance. Over the years, I've witnessed the unfair and disrespectfulness of how MDC treats this community, in particular minority contractors, to residents in this particular black and brown community. MDC, you have been this Goliath who have gone untouched and unfazed by the outcry of people in this community. I leave you with this, with this final message. They got scales to pay elephants. We expect that our representative represent us. And I want to note that I just spoke to a gentleman here from MDC who says that we can meet tomorrow to see what's happening. I'm going to hold you guys to that. And with that, I would like to say thank you very much for your indulgence.
Hello, MDC, and to whom I concern. My name is Brother Bernard Bourgeois. I attend the North End Church of Christ. And my job is to help with the church services and to clean and fix things as needed, along with the building manager, Brother Caleb. We had 18 inches of water in our basement, smelly water, and we didn't even know where it came from. We called the city, and they said, it's not our problem. We don't know, we have to go call someone else. Water damage all over the basement also includes two freezers and food damage, dehumidifier, snow blower, electric, electric power went out in half of the church. We had to buy lights and plugs and stuff too, just for the podium, okay? We also, the water heater contaminated, also the regular heater was needed fixing. The soil in the backyard contaminated. I hope the grass will grow, will grow back there. Our neighbors and congregation can smell this toxin for over a month. Our church members had to walk in this water and track it in the building from outside. Now babies and kids cannot even play or crawl on that rug. And we had to buy water pump, we had, we had water everywhere. Sometimes the pump would work every half an hour or so, and then it started going even, even more, five minutes at a time, even overnight. I had to throw away like six large garbage cans of clothes that, for the community, that we pass out when we do hot meals for the community. Also, the basement still needs a lot of work. And the clothes that I had to throw away, that was, that was, that was heavy, trying to get that to the front of the, to the street to throw away. All of this was, was not normal, regular, regular church duties. But we had to do what we had to do to keep the church going. Thank you for listening and your help in this situation.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Chris Williams, I'm a member of the North End Church of Christ, and I'm standing here with my brothers and people in the community to hope that MDC can do something to resolve this problem. It's an urgent, urgent situation that we really need to have resolution. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Chairman DeBella, esteemed members of the commission. For the record, my name is Tom Delneke, I'm the state representative for the 14th District, South Windsor, and I'm addressing item number 12 on your agenda here tonight. The intent of my amendment is very simple and very limited. It would allow the four non-member towns commissioners, Commissioner from South Windsor, Glastonbury, Farmington, and East Gramby, to be able to vote only, only, only on water rates. That would be the only thing that they would have any purview on as members of the commission. Currently, you've got 29 voting members of the commission that can vote on everything. With the addition of those four members, you would have 33 that could vote on one issue. And again, this is a case of fairness, because I hear from constituents every time there's a rate increase. What can I do to stop the rate increase? Well, I think that if you were to empower those four non-member town commissioners, at least the people in those communities would know that they have not just a voice, but a vote on the commission. It's fundamental fairness. And I'd like to commend your chief counsel, I believe that's Attorney Stone's title, for reaching out and beginning a dialogue pertaining to this issue. And I would hope that we can come up with some language, working with Attorney Stone, assuming the commission is amenable to that, so that we could have an amendment to 322 that would ensure that only, the only issue that the non-member town commissioners would have to vote on would be water rates. Again, I go back to the question of fairness, I go back to the concept of no taxation without representation, and I think it is just plain the right thing to do, is to take that action, empower them on that one issue, and I'm not looking to I want to put a rumor to bed here. I'm not looking to spread and increase whatever changes are being proposed. I am looking for only fairness for those four towns and one action. Again, I thank you for an opportunity to say a few words about this, and I will be listening to your discussion on item 12. And I honestly hope that each commissioner does the right thing here, takes that into account, and empowers those four commissioners to have not just a voice for their people and their communities, but a vote for their people and their communities. Thank you.
Further comment, Ray?
You know, these people were here a month ago, and now they're back this month, and I still don't understand 100% their problem. So could we at the next meeting, whether it's corrected or not, at the next meeting, Scott give a full report to the full board so we understand their concern? I'm not saying we're wrong, I'm not, I don't know if it's a City of Hartford problem, an MDC problem, but I really don't know. So I'd like staff to give us a full report on the problem these people have had. I mean, when you have six to eight times-
Yeah.
It was referred to PD-
BPW.
BPW.
Let them report at the next meeting.
Well, Scott can give a report at the next meeting.
We are working, we are-
We've been working for a month.
I'm not saying you haven't, Scott, I'm just saying I don't know the problem. I'd like to understand that I knew the problem they had in West Hartford. We went out, we put backflow preventers in, we corrected things. There were some were illegal connections that weren't even through, you know, zone, so maybe-
But we're doing that in Hartford, too.
I don't know, but if we could have a report, thank you.
Okay.
If I could just clarify, the comments regarding 65 Magnolia, oh, sorry. The comments questioning 65 Magnolia is what we've been working on. There was some other people who spoke tonight on flooding in their properties, which we will have to review with if there's written testimony, we'll check up on those, those addresses, and we can look into the backwater valve. But in terms of the 65 Magnolia, we've been working on, not with the city.
Which, which includes other properties in that immediate area?
Yeah.
The church is one of them. Okay, further, further comments?
Chairman.
Commissioner.
Hi, Commissioner Bush, hey, I just would like to say that I'm personally going to try to work on, and get to the bottom of what occurred with you guys up on the North End there. I gave you my business card last time, and nobody reached out to me. So I'm going to take it up with the, with the chairman and try to figure out if there's anything that can be done. So I understand your plight, try to help you out.
Further comments?
For the record, my name is Ellsworth Cross. I'm here tonight with the, with Ms. Lyons, with Ms. Facy, and the individuals affected. Investigations have been ongoing, Scott. Mr. Ruddy, with his crew, came out. We have been requesting a meeting, we have spoken with Mr. Joseph, and what we're just looking for is to get the community back in shape. It's a work in progress, but when you're under the weight of all of this, it's never easy. There is a lot of anxieties, and the agency, Upper Albany Main Street, the Upper Albany Merchants Association, is doing its best to keep this at a civil level. Mr. Ruddy has assured us that tomorrow, the claims group will be out. They will be looking at the property at 65 as well as the church. He has arranged for an appointment with Ms. Lyons. We'd like to not get this beyond a year. In June, June 21st, it will be a year since this disaster happened. It was a simple thing that took one day to correct and 123 days to live with. It's really ugly. If we could just get this corrected and move on, it would bring our name back to where it should be. And by or, I'm still assuming that I'm here. But we just want this rectified. Scott, I know that you're an action person.
Thank you. Thank you. Further comment? If not, item number six, no report here. Item number seven, report from the chief executive officer.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I only have one item tonight, and I mentioned this at numerous meetings throughout the year. We received a letter from Senator Kevin Whitco's last year concerned regarding our fees that we were charging for our launching of boats at Lake Madonna. I promised him and assured him we would review that and bring that back to the Water Bureau, which we did this past, last week, the 23rd of March. And the rates that were proposed and adopted in 2021, we reviewed those with the Water Bureau, and although there was no resolution, there was consensus that we would keep the rates the way they were in 2021 for 2022. We are still looking into, you know, post-COVID, we are, we're, it's recreation season, and we typically open up Lake Madonna during the summer for swimming activities that, those activities require for safely swimming, we need at least 11 lifeguards. And we're working with our new insurance carrier, Gallagher, and we're working with our OSHA partners and our staff, Chris LeVek's staff, to determine what, in this post-COVID world, what does lifeguarding look like in terms of, as you can imagine, you know, lifesaving events like mouth-to-mouth. So we, we're trying to figure those issues out quickly, and then trying to figure out if there's even a market. We've struggled over the last number of years, as you know, the last two years, we were not open because of COVID. But we do struggle in this environment to get enough lifeguards to have a safe opening, a beach opening. So I just wanted to report that, the discussions that we had at the Water Bureau, and it's an ongoing discussion regarding lifeguards and Lake Madonna openings. So I'll report back to Water Bureau and back to the full board next month. And that's, that's the report.
Ray?
At that meeting, and Chris LeVek, if you could help me, on the revenue side, keeping the rates the same, we still lose approximately $40,000 a year, approximately. We still lose, I mean, we're, we don't recoup our money. We still take a pretty good sized loss for the amount of income we take in. And that's why we said we'd leave the rates the same as they have been. That's all, thank you.
Further questions? Okay, item number eight, there's a report from the council, there's going to be an amendment, we're going to move this-
Yeah, after, yeah.
After, you want us to do it before or af- let's-
Do it after, I just have a few intros, if I might, Mr. Chairman, and then we'll move on to that. I'm going to ask at the end of my presentation for this board to consider amending the agenda to add an item relating to the Limbrook sewer disaster that occurred in October of 2018. But we'll get to that in just a moment with your indulgence. Just a couple of updates, things have picked up somewhat on issues relating to Colbrook and, and the Hartford landfill on the Colbrook issue. I had a conversation with the chief of staff for DPH this afternoon. There will be a meeting next week. I've, I've indicated that I'm available at any time, Scott's available at any time. They're going to put their team together, which will include the commissioner of DPH, as well as Lori Matthew and their counsel. So hopefully we'll get some movement on, on that issue and DPH's at least initial stance from July of 2021 on our potential release from the Colbrook agreement. So the amendment that we proposed in Congress is still pending. There was a public hearing mid-March for members, there's, there will be another public hearing for the general public, which we will submit testimony on, of course, in the- And the subcommittees and committees are marking up the bill, so we're optimistic that our amendment will be included in the marked-up Word of Bill. But we still need, pursuant to their request, our congressperson's request, we still need to get some feedback from DPH. So that's moving right along. We'll be able to report back in relatively short order, probably not... We won't wait until the May meeting. I'll keep you updated once we have the meeting next week with DPH representatives. On the landfill, we've engaged some of our chief executive officers within the MDC. They have, again, restated their support, and they've contacted the executive branch for some action on that. I'm waiting to hear back from Mayor Cantor from West Hartford, who has been kind enough to speak with Paul Mounds, the chief of staff of the governor, and hopefully, we'll have a meeting with Mr. Mounds and the mayor at some point this week. It'll probably be Thursday or Friday this week. But again, I'll keep you posted on how that proceeds. On the tunnel project and the tunnel arbitration, as you know, we had held a DRB session back in April of 2021. One of the representatives of the three member of DRB resigned from the DRB, so we were left with two members. And this happened after the hearing actually took place. We were unable to reach an agreement with KOJV on the replacement member of the DRB. Litigation followed because we have a different concept of what the agreement provides for. They filed an action in federal court, seeking a declaratory judgment from the court on exactly what process we should follow moving forward. We challenged, not on the merits yet, but we challenged the venue that that action was taken. We think that any action regarding the DRB should be taken in state court, not federal court. We heard last week that our motion to dismiss based upon the wrong jurisdiction was granted by the court. So it's going... If it's going anywhere, and they have to refile, it would be in state court. There is a 30-day appeal period running for the date that judgment was entered. So that's some good news for us. I will tell you that it's not on the merits. We're still working through that, but it's at least one step along the way that we were successful. We've had meetings with the City of Hartford. As you recall, last meeting, there was... We were going back and forth with the city on trying to schedule a meeting. Well, we actually had a meeting last Friday, followed up by a meeting between myself and the city's corporation counsel on Monday of last week. I'm sorry, the meeting with the city was two Fridays ago, my apologies. And I met with this corporation counsel a week ago Monday. We talked about the stormwater issue, and we've got some game plan moving forward to address that. It's still going to result in an amended ordinance from the MDC that's going to take into account our NETHES permit, our conversations with DEEP that Scott and his team have been heading and doing a very effective job on. And it will involve the City of Hartford. They'll have a stake and some say in reviewing the proposed ordinance. Ultimately, it'll be up to DEEP, but we're moving forward on that issue in a constructive way. As to the outstanding balance for our claim for the cost of cleaning catch basins above and beyond what we should clean under our permit, MS4 permit, I've provided everything to Attorney Rifkin. He has the... All the invoices, the backup materials. He has indicated to me, after our meeting, by the way, through no fault of his, he came down with a refill in this. So he was out the balance of the week, but he's back, thankfully, and he will get back to me later this week with either another meeting or at least the city's response to our claim. So that's moving forward. It's not resolved, but at least we're getting communication and we're getting some feedback from the city on that issue. And then finally, and again, if there's any questions on those four things, please let me know. But otherwise, if there could be a motion to amend the agenda to add the Limbrook case on for proposed settlement discussions, that would be appreciated.
So moved. Second? Okay. The first motion would be a motion to amend... I'm sorry, a motion to... Yeah, amend the agenda, which requires a two-thirds vote. And this would be the motion that would be introduced. Is there any objection to the motion to amend the existing agenda to put this before the body? If not, John, would you proceed with an amendment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. And we want this...
Call it 8A.
8A.
Okay.
The agenda item will be titled, "Consideration and Potential Action Regarding Potential Settlement of Pending Litigation: Precision Trenchless LLC v Sertex MultiCom LLP, Possible Executive Session."
Thank you, John. If I might, Mr. Chairman?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you for that. I appreciate your indulgence. We've been working on preparing for trial in this case, but there's been some significant action over the past two weeks or so towards a settlement. And it was just at 5:00 today that we... 4:30 today, excuse me, that we received word that there is a proposed settlement that has been accepted by all the participants in the litigation with the exception of the MDC, which is why I've asked that it be put on the agenda tonight for your consideration. As you recall, and with me tonight, or with you tonight, is Attorney Bill Sweeney, sitting next to Chris Levesque. He was involved in this litigation as well. He's done other work for the MDC, and he's done an excellent job in this particular case. The... You're all familiar, I'm sure, with the incident. It happened in October of 2018. There was a lining installation within Limbrook in West Hartford. The liner failed on or about October 18th, 2018, and it caused a significant blockage in the sewer pipe. It's a rather large sewer pipe. And as time passed, backups began to occur within Limbrook. We went out, our staff, crew went out and did a remarkable job, frankly, in addressing what was a significant problem that could have been significantly worse but for the actions of the MDC. There were meetings with the neighborhood after that. I'm sure you all recall, we met with the mayor, we met with residents. Scott was there on a number of occasions. The chairman was there, and some of you. I think Commissioner Bush was there. I don't know if you were a commissioner at that time.
He lives there.
But he lives on Limbrook.
He was a victim.
So it was an unfortunate event that was not caused by the MDC. There were several parties involved. We sued our contractor, which was Liddell Construction, and we sued the lining installer, which was Precision Linings. In addition to those two parties, there were two other parties that were brought in. One was the manufacturer, the other was a sub to the manufacturer. So we had a rather complex litigation. All cases got consolidated into one case. Our damages totaled realistically, at one point, $117 million, so $1,117,000. That includes mitigation for the sewer backup, restoration, cleaning, et cetera, structural repairs to property, personal property claims, which we paid replacement costs, but the law in the state of Connecticut, most states, is that the value of lost personal property is the value of the property at the time of the loss, not a replacement value to... Or purchase value at the time that the property was purchased. We've got attorney's fees of just under $200,000 at this point, but we add up the numbers, and it's the 1117. The parties have agreed, and they've split up the liability, they've split up the contribution to settlement, excuse me, to pay the MDC within 30 days of today, the sum of $1 million as settlement. We highly recommend the settlement. There's always a risk in trial. There's additional costs, obviously, with trial. And also, I'd have to bring out approximately 23 or 24 residents of West Hartford to come in and testify about their damage. So you're really buying... The insurance is costing you about $117,000. I think it's well worth spending. It resolves the case, and we can move forward. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions which you have. Attorney Sweeney's here to answer any specific questions about the litigation. I have not asked that an executive session be held, but if we get into liability issues, et cetera, then rather than state something on the record that could be used against us, I would ask that we go into executive session.
Questions?
I have a question. Thank you. Counselor, did 1.117 include the $200,000 for the attorney?
Yes.
It did?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So, hold on.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Jackie. Commissioner Mond...
Me. Mr. Chair, have we already... Like, all of our expenses have already been paid, correct?
They have.
And did we, in this year's budget, budget for this money coming in?
I'm sorry, say that.
No, what we spent, we have, but...
We have spent this money, but did we...
Go to the general fund.
It's already gone. Okay, so we'll go in...
It'll go into the general fund.
Yeah, but it'll go into the general fund.
Did we budget that it would...
No. We paid out-of-pocket.
Correct.
Cash flow. You know, we follow a cash flow.
In what year? Did we pay it out in 2018?
Immediately, 2018, October 2018.
Okay.
We were paying this. It wasn't our liability because it's the contractor's liability.
Correct.
But because of, you know, concerns about who is... What caused this? We didn't believe... I didn't believe at the time that our customers should... Would wait to figure that out.
Correct.
So we immediately stepped in and did all of the replacement on, you know, making homes habitable, which is really replacing boilers, replacing hot water tanks, making the house able to live in, and then dealing with, you know, personal property. And as you know, we're in October, it's winter time, lots of families store all of their winter stuff, coats, jackets, all those things, in the basements. And so we felt an obligation to address that immediately. So our staff were out there for months resolving this issue with the community.
But we didn't have... We did not project anything in this year's budget.
We didn't know when the settlement would come down.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Commissioner Drake?
On the $800,000 that we're paying out past the attorney, how much did... How much are we giving the residents out of the $800,000 for repair versus MDC that we took care of and out of costs?
There's no accounting for or request or damage for our staff work. That's part of our business.
It's what we do, yeah.
It's what we do.
So the $800,000...
But the $800,000 is to the residents, and as Scott pointed out, there's mitigation claims, cleanup. There's structural damage to some of the property, which we paid for, and the personal property claim. We also paid... That also includes living expenses. There were some people that were absolutely displaced for a period of time, and we paid the living expenses. Part of that, $1 million, is for that as well.
Further questions?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Vasino?
Yep, go ahead. Then I'll...
Chris, all contractors, are they required to have a bond posted?
Yes.
And does any of that bond go towards these damages?
Well, we named as defendants the owners of the companies that did the work or provided the materials. Who's paying include travelers, Great American Insurance, and some other insurance carriers, whether they're by bond or on liability, but they're contributing to the settlement as well. Sure answer is yes.
My second question... My second question is, who did the final repair work? On the pipe itself? Oh, on the pipe itself. We... Chris Levesque, where are you? We... Commissioner Scott Ellison, we replaced that liner with... What did we use?
It was an manufacturer, but the contractor self-performed the repairs.
So with his sub?
Correct.
Right. So the sub, who installed the original liner, which was an ultraviolet, different technology rather than our typical steam or hot water heat liner, that curing liner, we utilized a different manufacturer, but the same subcontractor installed the new liner?
So there's some...
Okay.
And there's been no issues with the replaced... Replacement liner? And that was since...
Thank you.
2018.
Further questions? Cal and then Rick. Cal, go ahead. I'm sorry. Rick, you head the floor. Go ahead.
I just... This is Commissioner Bush. I just want to state for the record, I should recuse myself from many voting on this issue.
You were a victim. Yeah. I'm sorry, Cal.
Yes, Commissioner Chairman. As I look at this, I mean, to me, it makes a whole lot of sense that we proceed with a settlement in light of the fact that, you know, we reduce any potential exposure if this were to be litigated in court. And in addition to that, we have the additional attorney fees and costs that are going along with that. So, you know, it doesn't make... To me, it doesn't make any sense to continue to try to...
This is a jury trial, so they reserve some time for jury trial. Jury selection is about a week, and then actual trial, three to four weeks. So you can...
Yeah, so I'm thinking, you know, it would be, you know... I think it would be penny wise and pound foolish if we don't move on the settlement.
Agreed.
Further questions? Do you have anything else to say? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Passes.
Thank you very much.
Item number nine, report appointment of commissioners to the Ethics Advisory Board. Is there a motion? Let me state the motion. Excuse me. The names, Commissioner Wolf, Commissioner Lewis, and Commissioner Patel will be the three commissioners appointed. Commissioner Gardo and Commissioner Hoffman will be the alternates. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
No votes necessary.
The appointments were made, I'm sorry. Okay. Board of Finance, item number 10, a consideration and potential action regarding Wickham Hill DWSRF 2000-7102. Is there a recommended action, receive a report, and adopt a resolution? Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Moved and seconded?
Second.
Discussion.
The commission approved unanimously at the Board of Finance.
That's what we drafted to send out on Friday.
Can you say anything?
I would just like to introduce...
Scott Ellison.
Scott Ellison, just take the opportunity to introduce Diana Fay. Diana, you're the... Would you stand up and just... She presented this to Board of Finance. But Diana Fay is our new manager of treasury. She was done with us for seven years, and she's been promoted internally to be the manager of treasury. So, thank you. She's been working on it.
Further questions? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Let's see. Is this up for action?
We're just going to refer this.
Just going to...
Yeah.
It's going to Board of Finance. Recommendation, receive a report and refer to the Board of Finance 2022 OPEB funding. Is there objection to referral? If not, we'll refer this to Board of Finance?
Yes.
Board of Finance. Let's see. Item 11, Bureau of Public Works, consideration and potential action regarding 249-257 Silver Lane Encroachment Agreement. Recommended action, receive the report and adopt a resolution. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Removed.
Removed and seconded? Let's see, who's... Yeah, why don't you... Do you want to take it?
This is... Yeah. This is a very simple...
It's an easement.
Encroachment agreement. We have a pipe that's located at 249257 Silver Lane. If any of you haven't had the opportunity to drive up and down Silver Lane, this is the new gas station/convenience store that's going next to Fo 57 and across the street from Taco Bell and Pizza Hut on Silver Lane in East Hartford. I only know that because I drive there every day. We have a pipe that is just on the easterly... We have a pipe that's, that is just on the easterly facade of the building, they have to do some construction that, that impacts that, that pipe, or at least impacts, impacts the easement area, the pipe's fine, the pipe will be protected, the reason for the conditions within the encroachment easement speak for themselves, and it's really to allow them to build the building without having the building located on our pipe, so, we urge you to support the, the encroachment agreement.
Questions?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Vasino.
Yes, Commissioner.
That was approved by Public Works on March 17 unanimously.
Okay, further questions? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Accepted. Item B, acceptance of sewers, DPA, is a developer's permit agreement, and that, where's that sewer, Scott?
Sue, you going to take this?
Sure.
I'm sorry.
This is 2,700 feet of new sanitary sewer off of Brook Street in Rocky Hill, was built quite a few years ago, but it, the street didn't get paved until the fall of '21, so we're just bringing it to you now for acceptance.
That's Brook Street in Rocky Hill. Dominique?
How, how old is the existing pipe?
This was a new, this is a new development.
Oh, sorry.
So, it was built in around 2013 to 2015 time period, but it didn't get paved until December of '21.
Thank you.
So, now we accept it.
Any questions? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? What was that? Okay, item 12, consideration and potential action regarding proposed amendment to Senate Bill 322, recommended action, receive the report and adopt a resolution. Is there, is there a motion?
Moved.
Moved and seconded? Okay, Chris?
Yes, Chris Stone District Counsel, very briefly, you heard Representative Del Nicky explain, probably better than I did, the nature of the, of this amendment, the original amendment that was submitted was, at least in my opinion, and thankfully, Representative Del Nicky's opinion, much broader than what he initially intended. We pass every year as part of our, our budget revisions to our water ordinances, in particular, Water Ordinance W1A, that's the ordinance that deals with our charge for treated water, and that's the, that's the ordinance that I believe Representative Del Nicky wants the non-member towns to have a say in, that is the charge for water, or, or water rate. I sent out a, an attorney-client privileged email to each of you, there may be any one of a number of other reasons to not support this amendment, and probably more, maybe more reasons to support it. I tried to capitalize what the discussion's been between your lobbyists and chairs of the Planning and Development Committee, and with Representative Del Nicky as best as I could, and, but I'll be more than happy to answer any questions, it's really, we brought this to the board in large part because while we take all proposed legislation to you, this amendment was particularly important because it involves your governance, and we thought that it would be, it's appropriate for you to have a say in, in how, and who has a voting interest in what happens before the district board. I would like to just point out and thank Commissioner Hoffman, the chair of the Government Committee, who was kind enough to forego a, a formal meeting of his committee in order to bring this directly to the board. The reason for that, obviously, is the session, this being a short session, they have to finish their business by the first Wednesday in May, so this is going to come up probably before our May meeting of, of the full board, so, thank you, Commissioner, for that. And if anyone has any comments or questions, I'd be more than happy, as best as I can, to answer them.
Cal?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I have a concern about the process. This body, through its committee organization, spends a great deal of time looking at discussing, debating, reviewing issues that come up that affect different areas of the operation, one of them being rates. And I know that a lot of time is given, a lot of serious thought and analysis to coming up with those formulas, those rate formulas. My concern is that absent not being participants in that process, how does a group show up at the time that a vote is going to be taken to determine rates if they have not had the opportunity to participate in an in-depth discussion of, as to why those rates need to be what they are, what they're proposed? So, that's my concern, that I would want to make sure somehow that if, if we were to recommend that this, it'll be supported, that those individuals that are going to be representing those towns are really knowledgeable and understand, you know, all of the nuances as to why the rates are what they are being proposed, and not just to show up and say, you know, because if I were on that, on that, on that group of four people, I'd say no to any rate hike, period, you know, simply because I can, and, and even if I don't understand why the rate heights are, are what they are, then, you know, I'm not going to approve them. And I think it does a disservice to the, to the bigger discussion that takes place within this body through its committees than, you know, and then makes a recommendation.
Well, I, and I'll do, give you a quick response, and then I think that you may want to add something to it, but Chris Stone District Counsel, you know, frankly putting, arguably, having the ability to vote on a, an ordinance dealing with the rates, water rates of the MDC would incent those non-voting, now non-voting members to participate more fully in the discussion, the deliberation, and the dialogue that it takes place amongst the other commissioners, whether they be at the full board, or attending a Water Bureau meeting where the rates are discussed, attending a Board of Finance meeting where the budgets are discussed. I can't guarantee, and no one can guarantee, that that would happen, or that there's, that they would even be in attendance, but this may provide that additional incentive. I, I, I hear your point, and, and the, the problem that, that I would have is, it's, it's tough to argue against participation. It's tough to argue against, you know, incentivizing people to participate, I think this may just do that, it, it may not, but...
Yeah, just a point for the record, the legislature gave these people, each town has a representative who can come to meetings, participate in the meetings, however, for the, as the, as the speaker pointed out, they don't have the right to exercise a vote on the rate itself, and this, these people can participate to whatever degree they want, and then they would have the right to exercise that vote, that's what the amendment would allow. And again, I concur with the, with the, our chief legal counsel, that it's a question of, you know, it's expenditure of their money, they're about the right to have a representative vote on that, and that's a limited issue relative to all the other things we do on the district board.
I believe they have the right, but as chairman of the Water Bureau, these commissioners that have been appointed, okay, Whit from, I don't know his last name, but the fellow Whit from Glastonbury, he was to attend our board meetings, sit, and then a woman took his place, she came a few times, but I've never seen anybody from East Granby here. New Britain has a vote on the water budget, I know last year, the last couple of years, he, that individual has not voted, has not attended the Water Bureau meetings, so, these people are going to have to be active to understand the whole process of the MDC, I don't want them just to come and vote no or yes. You know, they should be, if they're going to be appointed by their town, and I believe they do have representation, I'm not against that, but they got to be active.
Well...
And I don't think, Chris, it's by having that vote, you're going to see them here next meeting or the meeting after.
You know, I think that's, that's part of accountability...
Right.
...as an appointee, that, and, you know, if, if, if the town that they're, they're appointing authority sees for, you know, five, six, seven agendas in a row that they're not present, well, they've got to hold, they've got to hold them accountable, not you, they've got to hold them accountable, and, and maybe that will lead to...
If they're appointed and they have the voting right, if they only come that one night, they're really not giving justice to our member towns that are the majority of the water.
This is Commissioner Luchance, am I allowed to talk at this point?
Who's that?
Luchance.
Commissioner Luchance from Glastonbury.
Sure, go ahead.
I, I just want to add, like, I attend every single meeting, I don't talk much because I can't vote. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Solomay?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I do think that there should be representation for folks that are paying the bill, basically, and, and how that gets transformed to a vote, I, I, I'm not sure, I, I know Commissioner Sweets was talking about, I mean, we, from time to time over the years, we, we've had actual commissioners that don't show up, and don't participate, don't cast a vote, so, I mean, I don't want to impugn the integrity of people just because they're from a non-member town, but I would comment on, on something that Representative Del Nicky said, so, and in, in fact, maybe John Myrtle can, can give me the correct answer, but I think that there are only 17 commissioners from the towns, that there are four legislative commissioners and eight gubernatorial appointments, am I correct about that, or am I correct?
Nine, I think there's nine, and four is 13, and 16 is, towns is 29.
So, you'd be increasing representation, you know, by 25%, you'd be, you'd be going up 25% from 16 to, to...
No, you're going up four to 33.
Yeah, well, no, I'm talking about just the towns, because they, they would represent the towns, there's no chance for them to have a gubernatorial appointment, and, and theoretically, legislative appoint, appointees could represent anyone, they're not just representing any, the town they live in, they could represent any, any part of the district, but, so, it's 16, it would be going to 20 for representation from towns, that's what, that's basically what we're saying.
For votes on the water rate.
On one vote, on the, on the water bill only.
Yeah, on, on the water bill, but, you know, there, there, you're making it, or I shouldn't say you, but I mean, it's been, made to sound like they can only cast one vote a year on the water rate, but any, I, I see that as any vote on the water rate along the way is that they, they, they could cast a vote on, if, if the district board is casting a vote.
They're not, they're not members of any of those committees that would consider...
I said, if the district board is casting a vote on the water rate...
Right.
They have a vote, they have a vote.
That's correct.
And, you know, there may be more than one vote at the district board on the water rate, they, you know, district board, there could be, there's been more than one in the past where we, where we changed it, so, but regardless of that, my point was the representation, the level of representation, so, Granby, East Granby, they're, they're far less than 1,000 customers in Granby, right?
Twenty, 2,000 and change, right?
Two thou, 2,000, I think 2200.
In Granby?
Yeah.
Okay, so South Windsor is 2,000, or 2, 2, 2,100?
6,500, South Windsor 6,500.
Oh, you're talking about customers?
Yes.
Okay, all right, go ahead, that, that's why I wanted you to...
Hurry has 6,800, is that the number?
Are we certain about that, though?
You got, you got Farm, you got Farmington?
5,800 total of non-member town customers between the, between the four towns.
Farmington is like 7 or 800?
No, it's 400 and change.
Okay, all right, so, so we're going to give represent, it's my point, Bill, it's just a sort of balancing the representation, so to that many customers, we're going to give four, four votes, that's what I, is what I'm saying, so, I'm just kind of looking at that, how that works out with the other 16 commissioners from towns, and, and whether or not those votes are weighted, you know, by the number of customers in that town, but go ahead, I'm...
Cal had it then, Commissioner, Cal?
That's a very important, that is, you know, proportionality, you know, in terms of how this thing breaks down, but I think one way to address the issue of both participation and, and representation, because I think they, there should be some representation of these folks in, in deciding, you know, what would be fair rates based on what the, our costs are and so on, but I think the other way to, to approach this is not to give a blanket vote at, at the, at the level of approving the rate at the, at the far end, at the end of all of this process, but to allow this vote to take place, or this representation to take place, to give them the right to vote at the committee level, at the committee level, when it pertains to rate hikes. That ensures that you have to be at the committees to, to, to understand what's going on, so that you can have a vote as to whether or not you want to support this or not. That in turn would then move any, any decision on a rate hike forward with their participation, which could be either way, you know, forward or against it, as opposed to having it at the, at, you know, at the other end, this guarantees both things, you guarantee participation, and you guarantee representation at that level, that's where, that's where it really has to happen, so that people understand what is being voted on and why.
Commissioner Bush?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Gary LaBarre, I'd like to comment.
Gary, you're next, Commissioner Bush has got the floor.
Thank you.
Representative Torres, Commissioner Torres, I just want to say, I fully agree with most of the things that you were saying, I thought you articulated your points extremely well, so, the, the point that I want to make is, by the time we all actually take the vote on the rate, we have spent so much time deliberating and going through all the discussions that we generally are pretty much unanimous on our decisions, so I think that adding four additional votes, most likely, unless there was some contentious discussion, wouldn't necessarily sway the vote, and I think that they would be, I think that they, having the ability to participate in the committee is really the only way that you can understand how the vote is created, and how the rate is created, it's impossible to come in and just say no to a rate without understanding, I, I wouldn't be able to speak to it if I hadn't spent a couple of years learning how to do it, and, and you still hardly know, it's, it requires significant participation of all the members of this board to figure out the rate, I mean, and, and all the arguments that Commissioner Sweets has, and everybody has to, to, to save money here, to save money there, I think it's critical that, that the people who are, are paying for the water have an understanding of, of how the quote sausage is being made, because it's not just a, a rate that we come up with willy-nilly, it's very well thought out, very strongly debated, and it's, it's, I, I, at first I was opposed to it, now I'm like, bring them on, let, let, bring more, form more votes, it would be great.
Commissioner LeBeau?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I agree with the prior comments regarding service on the committees, I think it's essential that, because that's all, that's, that's all the background that we all discuss, and we have some feeling for why things are the way they are, and why they're finally presented, but there may be a more elegant way to do this. You mentioned that, and it would, it would, and I would, I would send this to, I'm sure Representative Del Nicky, who's my good friend, is listening to this, I hope, but there's a, a more elegant way to do this, is that the governor has eight appointments, we could, the legislature could say that four of those appointments would be from the non-member towns, that would make them full members, they would have appointments to all committees, they would have votes, and it would basically allow non-member towns more weight on all of our, just, all of our elements here, but the important thing is that, that, I mean, there already are people being appointed by the governor, the four of those were, I'm just suggesting this is a possibility, that they were designated to be from the four non-member towns of the four of the eight, and then that would be, that would be kind of an open and shut case in terms of they would have the vote on the... terms of they would have the vote on the, um, the remainder of this, of, you know, of, on the water rates. So I'd throw that out there as a, another possible way of approaching this.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Curry?
Uh, yeah, I've got, uh, I think Commissioner Patel had his hand up. Commissioner Patel and Commissioner Curry.
It's not fair.
What I was thinking, that on a water rate, why can't we develop a formula based on number of homes we sell and rate a vote? At a committee level or any other level, when they vote, there, there is a rate a vote based on number of homes we sell.
They're talking proportional?
Yeah. There's nine thousand...
That's my...
Non-member.
That's true for me.
Is that total?
Total, all four towns.
There's ninety-one hundred?
Ninety, roughly ninety-two hundred.
Ninety-two hundred, uh, voters of, of the four towns that are non-voting members right now.
And what's Rocky Hill, please?
Rocky Hills.
Rocky Hill is a member town.
I know that. How many, how many water rate payers?
Twenty-four thousand.
So, the out-of-town, we have one representation, that's what I'm saying. So if Granby only has sixteen hundred to two thousand rate payers...
Two hundred and twenty-one.
Okay, okay, and Rocky Hill has, South Windsor has two thousand...
Nobody responded to my response.
Saying is Rocky Hill only has one vote, and we have more people. The numbers don't... How can a town with two thousand have the same representation as the town of Rocky Hill?
Well, it's only on one vote on a water rate.
But it's a major part of the budget, the Water Bureau. The water...
That's right, exactly. One of the most important parts.
One of the most important budgets, the water rate, what our, all our rate payers pay.
Well, it's different, it's also different to...
Representation, but I think it's gotta be worked out.
It's also different too that they don't, that, that's a vote on the Clean Water Project too, the funding of the Clean Water Project, which in the non-district towns, it doesn't affect.
Yes, some of the capital improvements, you can have a conflict of interest, speaking from only perspective of their towns where they get water.
Okay, Commissioner Curry?
Yes, I, I, I definitely, uh, support...
Commissioner Curry, Curry.
Okay, I'm sorry to touch you, Torres.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I wasn't planning on speaking on this, but Representative Del Nicky's, um, proposal certainly, um, shall we say, instilled a lot of discussion back and forth. And, um, first off, to Commissioner LeBeau's proposal, uh, no. Uh, and if I understand it, if I understand it right, you have to be served with both water and sewer with MDC to be a member town. So, uh, that would still take a, uh, charter revision. Um, yeah. My, my, my position is, is similar to, uh, others who have spoke. Um, on, on the surface, I'm opposed to this, um, proposal. Um, but it leads me to say it needs further discussion, and, and I would like to refer back to government, uh, and discuss the opportunities. Rather than MDC decide whether a non-member town would have a vote, let the non-member towns themselves make that decision by having the opportunity to become, and it would take a, a change in our, our charter, um, but to allow non-member towns that only receive water service to become a, let's call it class, class B member, uh, with those that receive both services, class A members, um, and given the opportunity for those towns to say, we would, we would welcome the opportunity to buy into MDC's membership, because it wouldn't be free, because they're gonna have to now pay some of those costs that only member towns have to pay for. Um, so, I'm thinking, yes, we should give them a seat at the table, but only if they become a member town and the, the town itself makes that determination by their willingness to absorb some of the costs that a member town pays. Thank you.
Uh, I believe I had Commissioner Torres and Commissioner Salome. Anybody else that hasn't?
Yes, go ahead.
Cal?
Mr. Chairman, as I look at this, you know, I, it, it looks to me like we'd be, we'd start to become like electoral college in a sense, uh, in the way that, that we, we would be set up.
Small towns and the big towns.
You know, and then, you know, small towns with large, you know, uh, numbers proportionately, you know, making decisions for the, for the larger numbers. But, uh, that being said, I think, I, I, you know, I believe there's a, this consensus that these towns, uh, rate pay, these people who, who use these services should have, um, some kind of representation, uh, as to, uh, how they view and, and, and may support or not support rate hikes. So I, I think there's a consensus around that. I truly believe that, that we all believe that, you know, representation, taxation of representation is really unfair. However, I do think that, uh, we need to really think this through and go back and see if there are alternative ways, or creative ways. And I'm proposing, one of the things I'm, I'm proposing is that, yeah, you know, making voting members for the purposes of issues that relate to rate, the, the rate hikes, so that they can participate as full voting members on the committee, which gives them a tremendous amount of voice and power, because they can support or not support what that committee sends to the whole body. Um, and, and can also make a case, you know, at, at, at the time that the vote does come forth to speak for or against it, uh, you know, on, on their, on their towns' behalf. So I think there are ways to do this, but I don't think that doing it, uh, as proposed really, you know, is fair to, to, to the other member towns and also, uh, you know, to, to the, to the process that, that, that we give this, which is so important.
Commissioner Salome, then, our Chris Stone.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I, I would again, again point out that, you know, I, I'm definitely in favor of representation, but I think it should be some proportional, uh, thing. So certainly, if you looked at the way that, you know, the, the commissioners are distributed out amongst the towns, you know, uh, not the other, not the gubernatorial or legislative ones, um, you know, that if you put all four of those towns together, they, they deserve at least one, you know, representation, to be a full voting member. And we do have a, we do have an example from the not-that-distant past, although I don't think anybody here besides you and I, um, the town of West Hartford, town of West Hartford, uh, was not a full member of the MDC not all that long ago. So, but they had representation on one side. Maybe you can explain that, Mr. Chairman, because I know you're familiar with it, so...
You mean the West Hartford?
Yeah, when West Hartford was only a part member of the MDC, there, there weren't a, there weren't a non-member town.
We provided them service similar to the other towns. In nineteen eighty-two, they asked to come in, bring in sewer, and then they, water. So they have an obligation under the statute that we had, that they could become a member by virtue of the fact that they are serviced with both water and sewer. And they, they were the last, the last town, we always were seven, they made the eighth town. And that was, I believe, nineteen eighty-two that they came in under those ba, under that basis, that they would be full members because they were getting both water and sewer service, and they're paying for that.
So they came in with four, with four members, but they had members be previous to that when they were on the waterside only. It's my understanding that there were...
Uh, no.
There weren't, there was no membership from...
I don't recall that.
No, they, they weren't. They, they...
For my time, but I don't, I don't recall.
So they were treated as a non-member town then?
Yeah.
Right, because they were just purchasing services from us.
By contract, yeah. So, if I might, Mr. Chairman, just very briefly.
Go ahead.
Chris Stone, District Counsel. Uh, it's really not necessary for a formal vote on this, 'cause I, I've heard a lot of varying opinions and different suggestions. I would suggest that, um, with that, and, I don't wanna put Representative Del Nicky on the spot, but he's, you know, he's, he's heard what our positions are, what our suggestions are. And maybe it's some combination to what Commissioner Torres has suggested, having, and, and what Commissioner Salome, I think, is suggesting, having the four non-member represent, non-member town representatives elect one of them to be on the Water Bureau, so that they, you know, something like that, that help, handles the proportionality issue, and it handles the attendance slash research dialogue conversation issue. So, there may be, and there may be any number of alternatives, you know, around that, or, or not. But give us the opportunity to speak with Representative Del Nicky, um, speak with the committee's chairs. I'll report back. I do have a, um, they're not doing any, uh, I, I don't think you're meeting time for another couple of weeks, so there's some time to get this done.
You've got a couple of weeks to do that.
And, and, you know, this is, in all fairness to the representative, this is his amendment, right? I can make our position known to the chairs and to the, to the other, uh, our delegation from the member towns into leadership, but ultimately it'd be up to him whether to call the amendment as it is or not. And to the extent that we might be able to modify it, again, without, subject to your approval, collective approval, you know, that makes it fairer, but makes it meaningful, uh, we'll attempt to do that. And we'll report back, and maybe we'll report right directly to your committee, Commissioner Hoffman.
Yeah, we could have...
The chairman, I'd like to ask a question. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to follow up.
Who's, who's asking? Go ahead.
Gary LeBeau.
Commissioner LeBeau, go ahead.
Yeah, very, very briefly, uh, I mean, and Don, I, Don Curry, I appreciate your, your points. Um, I, I, and I was basing my, uh, my suggestion on the, on the assumption, that which is maybe wrong, that the governor's appointees, um, could be from anywhere. Are they, do they have to be from the member towns at this point?
They, they do have to be from one of the eight member towns.
Of course.
In fact, they spell it out as to where each of them are from.
But the, the, the governor...
Then my, then my suggestion is, uh...
Let me, let me give you a little history here.
I would, I would, I would withdraw that suggestion.
Let me give you a little history.
And I, I do, I, I broadly, broadly speaking, I do, I do, uh, like what you're saying right now, um, Counselor Stone. I, I think it's a, a good idea to, to have some more discussion on this. And this is, this is part of the problem when things don't go through a, a hearing process, when you have an amendment which has not been, because it's an amendment, it hasn't been, uh, had, had a hearing, and we don't have the kind of, the same kinds of discussion would take place in front of the appropriate committees, uh, that we're having right now. So I'd, I'd like to throw this back and say, let's discuss this with more with Representative Del Nicky and the other interested parties, and, uh, see what we can wash out. Thanks very much.
Yeah, ju, just a little history here. Um, originally, until I believe it had to be, what, nineteen nineties, nineteen eighty-eight, eighty-nine, uh, all the gov, the governor appointed everybody to the board. It was a gubernatorial appointment. Um, and then, I think it was late nineteen eighty-eight or mid nineteen eighties, there was an amendment that introduced sixteen members from the towns, nine from the governor, and then, subsequent to that, in the early nineties, there was an amendment that allowed four new appointments by the legislature, equally, majority leader, uh, the president of the Senate, the, the Speaker of the House, and the, uh, majority leaders of both parties. So you had two Republicans and two, uh, Democratic appointments. Um, they were at it, and that's got us, that got us to twenty-nine. Then, subsequent to that, five, eight, ten years, whatever it was, we had the four, the vote for four of the, uh, cer, towns that we service on a limited basis without a vote. Um, so, that's where the history stands now. So, there was a, a lot of argument here, and you're right, relative to proportionality and, and a whole lot of other issues. And I think that, uh, our chief legal counsel makes a good suggestion that we proceed on a negotiation, or at least back and forth. And again, one of the problems is this is a short session, and it also is a session that, uh, there wasn't a public hearing on this. This is an amendment that's being brought to the floor, so let's proceed in that manner. There's no objection. Objection? Okay. Item number thirteen, opportunity for general public comment. Public comment. Uh, item fourteen, commissioners' comments and questions.
I got one.
I'm sorry.
Over the last few months, I've been reading a lot of editorials on the redevelopment proposal at, uh, Raynard Airport. Could we at the next meeting have, uh, the two thousand and six report? Probably only five or six of us were here then, that, you know, everybody talks about the proposal the MDC is in favor of. And I'm not saying I'm against it, but I'd like to see that proposal, so all the board members could see it, and we take a stand. Are we in favor of that, or we're not? And, uh...
I, I have no problem if you wanna bring it up as an item that we discuss, uh...
I don't even care if we discuss it. I'd just like to see the proposal...
We haven't taken, yeah.
...of what, you know, the MDC offered for that land, period. I don't even, there's, needs to be no vote or anything, but just to show everybody on the board that wasn't here then what the proposal was. So when they read the editorials, there was one yesterday that was on a couple days. There's probably one every two weeks.
There was, there was a referral to the exec, one person that wants it, who was an executive of the MDC. I believe they're referring to me. So, I remember, executive, who's, what executive in the MDC?
Executive, yeah, yeah, I guess you are the only one. But it's not that, not that...
Right, that's not the point I'm making. I'm not an executive in the MDC, and I don't get paid, so...
It's not that editorial though. It's editorial after editorial over the last few months. So, if we could just get an update what that proposal was back in two thousand and six, so we all could see what it is and remember exactly what it was. And I'm not looking for a vote, I'm not looking to change anything. I'd just like everybody to see what it is. If they have questions, then they can ask the questions on that two thousand and six...
Yeah.
...proposal that the MDC paid for and proposed.
Sure. Uh, Cal, Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Jackie, you have some?
I would be remiss if I didn't, uh, raise the, the, again, the issue of sixty-five Magnolia Street. Uh, I'm very, very concerned about that situation there. I know that we've been doing things, uh, but it doesn't seem like it's resolving the problem. Uh, and I wanna make sure that, that we do everything possible, uh, to ameliorate this, this situation, even if, uh, down the road it means that, that, uh, dollars have to be spent to take care of this issue, and then we find out who's responsible for, for paying it later on, uh, and go after, you know, uh, the, the parties that, that need to be responsible for this, or if it's ourselves, I don't know. Uh, but I think that it's gone on too long, uh, that, you know, this is not rocket science, uh, and I think we're spending a lot of man-hours or people-hours of trying to, you know, uh, resolve the situation. And I know we've, we've been there many times, but, you know, unfortunately, you know, we, we still have this situation taking place, and, and I think it doesn't look good for us.
Let's, could we do this, clear the air, just to give you a general concept of what happened and what we've done and what the case has been over the last several months?
Yeah, without getting into...
I, I understand that, and I know we've done a hell of a lot, but that's, you know, I'm not worried about what we've done.
And we still are, Commissioner.
Well, what I'm saying to you is that it's been this long, you know, you got a, you have flooded basements with all kinds of turrets, for God's sake, floating in the basement. You got a church that's, you know, that's got this situation. And I'm saying, you know, uh, we've got the expertise, you know, we've got great staff, engineers, we got the greatest, you know, possible people to work on this. We can get this resolved, you know, and I, and so I'm saying, you know, let's see if we can do something, even if we have to go back, you know, and chase the dollars somewhere from somebody. But this has gotta get resolved.
Let's, let's just put it in perspective quickly.
Yeah, without getting into the details, um, because we, we're still fact-finding, right? But the, but the confusion on this specific issue with sixty-five Magnolia, uh, really started when, um, a building right next door, fifty-nine Magnolia, was demolished. It was permitted, demolished by the city of Hartford. Only after, uh, that demolition did issues start to arise, something's wrong here. You know, there's, there's a sewer back up... there's a sewer back up in 65. So we worked diligently with the city trying to understand what happened, how it happened. And we're doing a fact-finding to understand, you know, what the city's role is in this and what our role is. I've had our staff up, you know, trying to understand what does the sewer system look like? And we weren't sure if the sewer system went through 59 Magnolia and into 65. Some of our records show the dates in which 59 Magnolia was built and what 65 or really Albany Avenue was built. The dates don't match up. What we do know right now is that the sewer system that feeds 65 Magnolia and this Albany Avenue property, which is connected, 59 Magnolia was built on top of the sewer that served that, that property. So as you can imagine, in 1917, there probably was not a lot of permitting processes that went through. So Commissioner, I completely understand. We're trying desperately to try to figure out what happened and how it happened. And independent, and as I've said to, to our legal counsel and to the ladies that are here tonight, independent of who's responsible for this damage that occurred inside because of the demolition of this property that was permitted by the City of Hartford, we still have a problem that we got to resolve because that sewer line that serves this property is still under this demoed property. So it's complicated. We're trying to understand what, you know, the city did step up and do, provide a lot of assistance to 65. They were putting hotels for a period of time.
By the city.
There was compensation provided by the city. We need to understand how much money has been compensated by the insurance company, if any. So we're working on that diligently with John Myrtle and our staff out in the field trying to understand how this sewer works. And unfortunately, it's taking time, but we are working on it desperately.
I guess...
And one further issue is that, remember, we're dealing with 1917 records, which were not our records, they were the City of Hartford's records. MDC never ran the sewer system until 1946, 47, right after the war, and you had the big suburban growth. So we weren't using our documents, we're relying on documents that the city provided, and then they're in more than one location and by age. So it, there's a lot of problems here, but I think Scott's right.
Yeah, I guess, you know, and I understand all of that and I, and I, you know, I've heard this prior to it, but here's my thing. We have an existing problem. Can we do anything to ameliorate that? Can we get in, backhoe in there? Can we put any check valves, you know, in the, in the system? Can we reroute a pipe, you know, a simple stop-gap solution in the interim, you know? Because these other, these other issues are major issues and they have to be resolved, and I understand all of that. You know, it takes engineering, you know, studies, it takes all kinds of things to be done. But in the meantime, you know, these folks have that problem.
Commissioner, I just want to assure you, short-term, the service was restored by the City of Hartford. And unfortunately, this service is underneath the foundation of a demolished building, 59 Magnolia. So, so right now, where this is a matter of, for the Ms. Facy, she's looking for, you know, compensation of some sort for what happened. The, the issue that we have is that, and we got to work out the issues with how much, what was, how she was compensated by the City of Hartford, how she was compensated by, by the, by the insurance company. But even more importantly, that we've got to find a resolution. As you know, that the sewer lateral from the main to the property is owned by the property owner. So now we have their lateral, which serves Albany Avenue and 65 Magnolia, one, one physical property that's under an abandoned demolished house. So the, the long-term is we've got to get, they need a new lateral to bypass this demolished property. So I completely understand your point where we're desperately trying to figure this out.
I may be misunderstanding this. Are they still saying that they have a continued flooding issue of sewage?
Their flooding issue is over. Now the issue is compensation for...
What about, what about, what about the church?
Same with the church.
Is it compensation only?
Compensation.
Okay, they're not getting, they're not getting flooded.
Church wasn't hooked up to it.
Okay.
But the repair...
So I, I understand they, and I...
They're not misunderstanding their argument.
Without looking at some of the addresses that were talked about tonight, we have a specific issue regarding 65 Magnolia and the adjacent Albany Avenue property. Some others talked tonight about flooding, and I, without looking at the addresses, I don't know if those addresses are talking about the August 28th and September 1st and 2nd storms that were, you know, related to street flooding and all those things. I, I can't comment on those until I look at them. But we are working on the 65 Magnolia and the Albany Avenue surcharging event that occurred specifically because of the demolition of 59 Albany, which, you know, was permitted.
59 Magnolia.
So we're, yeah, 59 Magnolia, sorry. So we are working on those details to understand what happened.
Thank you.
Commissioner Slimmy and then Hoffman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a note for, at some future meeting, that perhaps Scott and the staff could get together, just a brief presentation about cybersecurity here at the district. It's a, it's a pretty big topic, you know, with all utilities and for, you know, infrastructure across the United States. By comparison, the MDC is relatively small as far as, by comparison to other water companies and other utilities or public utilities. But I think it's still of great interest that our water supply and our water treatment facilities are protected as much as possible and sort of, I don't know, if we're disconnected from the web to get, you know, to make it that way or if we have other protections. But if you could let us know at some point in the future, not asking you to tell us any secrets, just basically, you know, reassure us that, that we do have some protections for ourselves.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could ask a direct question to Scott, with all due respect, Scott, can you just assure us that in fact, MDC has done every possible repair to keep this problem from recurring or take care of somehow restoring by cleaning or removing or whatever the heck it might be, that we've done everything that's within our power? Because we know that if this were a situation that occurred elsewhere in the district, that chances are, we would not be talking about that tonight. And I, I don't know some of the particulars either, and I've been here a while, and I don't know if it's something that was tied in with our work on Granby Street, if it was tied into some work that we had done on Upper Albany, if there were things that occurred that perhaps we weren't aware of. And so now we're faced with a situation where a customer or customers have a legitimate complaint in terms of what they face. And I don't think any one of us would want that situation occurring in our basement. So it sounds like we may not have done every possible thing that we have, unless you correct me if I'm wrong, that we've done every possible thing we can. I don't understand quite, and maybe Mr. Stone can answer this question, can't we get a court order to suspend this situation where it is until such time as we have to take it to court or some other?
To which part?
Which?
What are we talking about?
The Magnolia Street.
Okay, so just, let me just...
Correct. Yeah, please.
Yes, we've done everything. They have service, okay? That's the important part.
Okay.
The service was disconnected, physically disconnected by the City of Hartford under a demolition permit for another building, unknowingly that this lateral that served this property was physically underneath and connected to 59 Magnolia. So we're trying, so there is service, and I just, I think there clearly was a misunderstanding that there's still something happening there. That's not true.
Okay.
So the service is provided to the property. The long-term problem is the service is underneath a demolished building, so we have two issues we got to worry about. Who's liable, the city or the MDC? And we're working out those issues. We've, like I said, been out there physically to see, like, did this pipe go through the foundation of 59 and then over to 65? Or we now know it's physically underneath the building. And 59 was connected to the same building. So when they disconnected the service, thinking it was just for 59, it was actually serving another building that neither the city nor the MDC was aware of. So it's not the city's fault, it's not our fault, but the question now is who's liable for that? We're working out those details, but the property has service, but we're concerned about future liability. And so part of the solution in any settlement that we have with Ms. Facy should include making sure that a new service lateral is connected to her property onto Magnolia, bypassing this old lateral.
But we can do that.
We can.
We can.
But we don't, but this is a lot of, we don't know.
Right.
And we need to ask through legal counsel because we need to understand what are the damages. We don't have a good understanding of, we know the city paid certain things. We don't know what insurance companies paid. So we don't want to double pay. So we have to understand that from the property owner, and those are the things we need to work out.
I guess the bump in the road for me to fully understand this is can't we worry about the actual liability through two years from now or six months from now? But the stink is there and that's not going to go away, you know, by itself, so...
And the properties are hooked up?
Yeah.
And that's the important thing, right? That has, that has stopped the bleeding, so to speak. That stops the damage. So we have achieved practically a, a status quo moving forward where there's no additional contamination or discharges to this person's property.
Did the city have surf pro, clean the property?
I believe they cleaned the basement, but we're going to be back out there tomorrow.
So we've been out there a couple of times, but, but the city, you know, in the immediate fallout of the demolition and then once, once the city and us started to understand that there was a problem on another property next door. And again, this is a very common thing that's happened in the City of Hartford, you know, over the last hundred years. This is not the first time we've seen this kind of a scenario. But the City of Hartford stepped in, to their credit, and provided services to this property owner, which included the initial cleanup. It included housing people in hotels during, for months during this process. So what we need to understand is what has been paid out. The immediate problem is, is over. Now it's a long-term issue, and I, I believe the financial issue of reimbursing Ms. Facy is, you know, it's, it's a combination of understanding from the City of Hartford and the insurance companies, what was paid out to date and what is our liability associated with that. As you know, I don't want to get into the details about a permitting process for demolition, but we have, you know, some issues to work out with the city and we'll, we're working on that.
And the, and the second issue relative to the valve, the backflow valve, is a separate issue. That was a question that was raised at a committee, a community meeting where I believe her, the woman's name was taken and how it fell...
Well, we had a lot of, you know, we had, we had, and I reported this at Water Bureau and at BPW, sorry, BPW, we reported those storms, August 28th and then September 2nd and 3rd, whatever the dates were.
August it was.
It was a 200-year storm, 200-year storm. The storm system on Albany Avenue is designed to handle less than a 10-year storm. So, you know, I, I, I'm not trying to say that the properties that came tonight are part of that, but we had a number of people complain about water in their basement, water coming through the front door. Dave Brody and Chris Leveque were out there and we investigated all of them. And it's either three or four, but we only had three or four surcharges from sewer to people's basements out of all of those properties. The rest of them were due to literally water coming into the property from the street, from the front door. So remember, as you saw the video, there was two feet of water, two feet of water in Albany Avenue. And it's a relatively flat area, so that water just came into people's houses and businesses.
It also happened in several other neighborhoods. That was August of 2021 when we had four storms in that month. Two of them were 100 and 200-year storms. I don't believe at the time I've been here that there's ever been 100 and a 200-year storm in, in at least the last 45 years or so. So we then had, I think, a 45-year and a 25-year. All of them exceeded the 10, 10-year standard that the system's designed to. So it's climate change was that, that was terrible that August where we got hit. And like, like Scott said, there was actually water that was running from the street into homes, not surcharged so much through the sewer. But what we did do in those community meetings, we did go out and we took people's names, addresses, and we, I don't know how many backwater flow valves we put in, and we, we increased the, what, $800,000?
We put in $2 million this year as a budget.
Budget, right. From $800,000. Cal?
Yeah, just very quick, because I want to continue to beat a dead horse.
I'm sorry, Jack, yeah.
But, you know, if we can get those estimates from those, from those, as quickly as possible and even do some kind of an administrative settlement and get this thing out of the way, you know, I mean, that's, I think that's the way to go. We shouldn't continue to do this and then wind up going into litigation and then having to pay attorneys because we're going to be taken to court. You know, this is nonsense. It shouldn't happen. I think, you know, if we can get this done quickly, I don't know what's holding up the estimates, you know, find out what they're paying and what is she asking for, you know, maybe negotiate and get it out of the way.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank Mr. Jellison and also his staff. Last Wednesday, I attended the grand opening or the ribbon-cutting of the Anna Grace Elementary School in Bloomfield, and Scott and his staff were able to help move along some processes that we needed help to try and get the school open. It's a crack magnet school. And Anna Grace, the school is named after Anna Grace who was shot and killed at Sandy Hook. And it's a beautiful school, and our staff and Scott really went to bat to make sure that they could open in January. If they didn't open and meet deadlines last fall, they were going to have to wait until July to get these kids into the school. So I really want to thank the staff and Scott specifically for helping us out on that.
Further comments? Commissioners? Other business? I think we covered other business too. If not the appropriate motion of adjournment is in order?
Motion to adjourn.
Without objection, we stand adjourned.